Laurie, you lead us in the pledge of the flag. You haven't done that in a while.
I have never done it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, of course it does. Andy, do you want to go first?
Do I go first?
Pass this around. That's uh, just for George there, projects, normal operation stuff. Um, that's been going on, so at least he has an idea as to what's what there.
Are you gonna give him a little packet?
Um, that's good. Yeah, we've, we've been doing that. Um, and he's, him and I have been talking back and forth as to what's going on and, um, so at least he's not left out on the field.
He's not coming in cold.
Yeah, coming in blind. So, he has, he'll at least have an idea as to what's going on, um, at that point. Uh, I do want to ask the board for approval to have, uh, Rocky Tasker there, um, start grading for us in town. He usually does spring grading for us anyways. Um, I made up a list of all different roads for him to go and grade, um, at that. And I know we will be short with the grader operator.
Doesn't George have his grader operator?
He does, but if he's gonna be the road agent, it's gonna be hard for him to be in the grader all the time, Andy Holt. So, it's gonna be at that point. And this is something we do every year anyways. Typically, just in the springtime, they go to grade just, just in the springtime for us.
I see a list here.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. So, um.
So, this is an all Lock Lake again?
Pretty much, yeah.
Oh, then he's got a few other ones out there. Hillsborough, Box, Bowery, Howard.
A few of them while he's right there trying to work his way back at that point. Hopefully, that'll give George enough time to try to get some errata on this side of town done too as well. So, get a handle on things.
Is this more than he usually does?
That's a little bit more than he, than he usually does. Last year was about almost about half the town, what they did last year. He wants us just to try to hit around faster and then do the second one. So, at that point, because when we started grading, it was still a little bit across in the ground, um.
So, how the frost out?
It, it'll be pretty much by Friday. So, there's not much at all. Some spots there's done, some spots there's a little bit, but there's spots there. So, I just wanted to, um, ask the board for that, so at least that they do. I don't want to just go ahead and do that without you guys being aware of it.
Isn't it weird being your last day?
Well, yeah. I mean, last year I didn't, I never asked for that last year because we just kinda did it, but, so, people's different.
Yeah.
But, no, I'll be here next week too, again. So.
All grading. Well, you can be working part-time anyways for it.
Yeah, we have money.
So, the board was okay with him having Tasker do the grading?
I, I. I will say a couple of things. Uh, one that you can deny is that the frost is gonna go out early this year. The second is, if we're gonna have him grade these roads, might we not want to start applying gravel and let him, let him do the whole job? Instead of bring this, bring the edges in, incorporate it, and roll it, which brings us to another subject, and that is, uh, do we want to lease our roller early? Or you said Jason's looking for one. Well, Jason could be looking for one next Christmas.
I mean, he's been looking for one for a year and a half, probably.
I guess what I'd like to suggest is that we get going, get one from Mark Fraser, and, uh, just, just stay one step ahead. You know, we worry about whether we're gonna work eight hour or ten hour days. Let's make the most of our time. And if we've got the money for gravel, let's put some down and grade those roads once.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get the, get the roller until like middle of April because I'd hate to, hate to get it and then it sit for a month not being used if it decides to rain a lot in April. Um, at that point, I mean, you don't know what's gonna happen otherwise.
Well, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
But I still think we ought to make arrangements to, to lease it, and I think we should be ready to move when the frost is out.
So, you're saying Tasker will grade it and then the rest of the crew at the same time have him use gravel to grade it? And at the same time have one of our guys roll it? Or have Tasker do the whole thing?
Is Rocky able to roll work?
He doesn't, he does not have the roll.
So, we definitely use that.
So, our guys would do the rolling, but it should be done all at the same time?
I believe so. That's my opinion. Now, that particular road, uh, if you've ever watched it when it's been graded, the, the base of that road is nothing but rocks this big.
Of all these roads?
So many rocks in it, hardly any dirt on the road. It needs gravel worse than any road in town.
Which road are you talking about?
Tasker, John Tasker. You don't usually get the roller from Mark, do you?
No, usually, usually it comes from ATS. I haven't called them for price yet. Yeah, so I don't know what their prices would be this year, or I don't know if Mark's prices have gone up either. So, usually they don't. They try to get one that's wide enough so they can kinda do the road one pass, one lane.
Why don't you work that into your schedule for the next day or two?
So, was that comment meant just for John Tasker road or all of those roads?
No, you couldn't possibly do all of those roads.
No, all of you can do, I mean, but yeah, there's a few roads here and there.
Just trying to understand the comment because you said, I think we should use gravel and roll all at once and do it all at once. And I wasn't sure if you were talking about all these roads or just John Tasker.
Ninety percent of the roads you see in front of you are Lock Lake roads.
Right, so that's where I was confused.
Those roads are made up mostly of very fine sand. Like, have you believe it's gravel, but it's not. And until they are ready to be worked in a much bigger way than we're gonna do, uh, I suggest we stick to the town roads and, and improve them as best we can.
So, you were talking about the town roads, not the Lock Lake roads, or?
That's my opinion.
No, I'm just trying to understand because I was a little confused. I thought you were talking.
I under- I'm, it's okay, don't, don't, don't. It's clear over me.
Ball. Technically, ball.
You gave me the whole road. I think you gave me two hundred and fifty dollars. Spare up.
So.
Lock Lake, Lock Lake, Lock Lake, Lock Lake, Lock Lake, Lock Lake.
I think he means town roads are more travel.
Lock Lake, Lock Lake, Lock Lake, Lock Lake.
By not just.
Rangeway.
I'm just trying to get.
That's probably.
Oh, I think that's a town. Rangeway, where's the?
That's in, that's in Lock Lake, I'll run it through.
These are Lock Lake roads.
That's a little short road.
These are, these are all Lock.
No, Old Rochester is not a Lock Lake road.
It's not Rochester's road.
Old Rochester Road.
Maybe this John Tasker road though. I go to Lake Rochester.
It goes to the west.
If you start out here to New Road.
Oh, okay. Is that a dead end?
A red straight.
No, you go, you go all the way down, don't that way.
And then, and then, if you go right, it's classic.
Which means this is wrong because that's the.
Oh, okay, not one of our strappers.
Yeah.
Shelton, Castle, and Georgetown. All right.
I drive by that and like, old time names.
Yeah.
So, you were, you said this, you were referring to these?
Yeah, that's a, that's a rental.
Even though John Tasker is in it?
No, but.
It hasn't passed the C E O yet.
That's what I was trying to understand. I thought you were referring to this.
You don't have the Evans Mountain Road on here for Rocky?
Nope, that was for us. So, mo- majority of the complaints come from over, over that way. And when George starts, he's gonna start to grade, he's gonna work on school bus routes first anyways. So, they, school bus routes always take precedence. So, you'll have Beauty, Beauty Hill, Garland Road.
All right, so, so you want Rocky to grade the Rock, Lock Lake roads?
That's typically what I would do. We should put him over there Lock Lake because he can get around a little bit faster over there.
All right, I agree.
Where is Evans Mountain Road?
Another one.
Get around.
If you go, you, you go down.
Home and outside.
Yeah, go down John Tasker Road there. Hold up the paper, it starts to turn to dirt, but then just up there.
Oh, okay, great. One of these days.
Goodrich Evans Mountain up there, yeah.
It'll be during a hot summer day. All right, I'm just trying to keep talking to this.
Yep.
So, we want to make a motion to authorize Andy to hire Rocky to turn him loose?
I make a motion that we have diverted and hire Rocky Tasker to grade the roads in Lock Lake.
How much, how much time are you expecting him to be out there? You've got, you've got him for two weeks, one week?
Yeah, probably be above three weeks there probably then. But, just with that, I mean, he can do, because he can typically do the front of the colony one day, the middle of the colony one day, the back of the colony another day, and got it on the ground, so.
So, he just turned Brian loose? Does he do it himself, or?
Right now at the moment, and even last year it was Brian that did it, and this year it'll be Brian himself, only because of, uh, some health issues with him right now, so.
Rocky?
Correct, yes.
Is he at the hospital?
Yes, he is. He's out of there.
I told you the number I knew before. So, I don't want to ask the questions here tonight, so I'll wait and ask you later.
Is that fun? Yeah, I have no problem telling you, telling you now. So.
Okay. Is your second to that motion?
Second.
Motion been made to second it to authorize the road agent to hire Rocky Tasker and son to grade the roads at Lock Lake. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed. Okay.
Um, is a paving schedule there for you? The other three sheets are the proposed roads to pave this year for colors that need to be replaced.
Do you understand them?
Yeah, this is, uh, yeah.
Are you sure?
I have, I have one that I went to him and came here, the board there a couple of weeks ago. Um, you want to make them back? I tried to get some more, um, bids for paving. Pike has got so much work that they're not taking any bids from my effort right now. What, one of their sales reps is only two as well. Tried to reach out to another one, they haven't shown up. They're, they're at Franklin. They haven't shown up at all yet, and the sales rep is going on a two week vacation now, so. So, I only have one, um, not really what I want to have. So, we got, as we discussed earlier, was Peachum Road was to be paved, Holmes Road, Shackleton Corner, and then to top that section on White Oak Road that we just put binder on is what we did. Um, one thing with White Oak Road in general is with them doing proof twenty-eight construction right now, where they're using their storage facility up there. We need to make sure that that road stays in the condition it is if it gets damaged from them and they need to repair it, um, at that point. So, I just wanted to make sure of that. Peachum Road, there's two different ones you'll see on it. Um, the top one was from Wynwood to North Barnstead Road. That almost two thousand foot section there. That one could be just an overlay if there was enough money in the budget so the whole road was on. Forget, it was a few years ago, um, when Jim had that done, that section. But it's not bad though. So, that'd only be, be a one inch overlay at that point, which is kinda like a meanest thing that they call it, to do, but only if there's enough money in that. So, with everything here, it would be five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars from what the bid that I have from the one contractor right now. We'll have five hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars total this year for paving. So, there is kind of a, a buffer in there.
And the bits from Walcott?
Correct, that is. So, um, and he, he kept the same prices as last year. So, um, he is, he is getting busy with work right now. He's, he's gonna be the one paving twenty-eight this year as well. So, um, but.
Can your, can the staff get all the, um, color change?
They can. There's only nine of them, if I remember right, um, that need to be done. So, and I, I listed them all out on the sheet, sheet two that which ones need to be replaced, what sizes. They need to be to go in. So, it's all there for George to come in.
And does Walcott, if he's successful, does he have a starting date?
He, he could start as early as June if they get them all done. So, that's usual, that's typically his slow time. Um, the majority of the municipalities there, they don't start paving until end of July, August, and then that's when he get, he really gets busy at that.
Right. I remember last year he did that.
So, um, and we did, we did it real quick. What? Uh, Shackleton Corner Road.
Did you see that?
Yes. Shackleton Corner, does it need to be dished? We ditched that two years ago, um, last fall. Peachum, because I was planning on paving Peachum. I started to ditch that last year, so there's not much left of that that needs to be ditched, but there's a few areas here and there that still need to be done. And outside of the culverts there, that's it really for them to, to do in the way they, they, they can start paving at that point. So, get it, get it done with this block.
So, just give me that number one more time, Andy. Five forty-one?
Five, so down at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, five, five, five eight. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is what the total would be for this year, and that's without the top section of Peachum.
Yep.
Is what it is. So, and total was five hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars that we have this year for paving.
So, you're not, you're not in favor of doing Peachum?
No, Peachum's gonna be done. It's that two thousand foot section at the top from, from Wynwood to North Barnstead Road.
What we did years ago.
Yes, it's not in bad shape.
Yep.
But if there was enough money left over in the budget to just overlay it real quick.
Oh, he's already there?
Well, he's already there, but there's not, there may not be at that point, so I left it out at that point. Um, just in case, I'd rather, I'd rather leave it out and try to plan on it, especially if they end up paving that road first and then find out there's not enough after it, so. And that's why I tried to make a, make a buffer in him too, so. I measured, I measured all the roads myself, came up with all the numbers, and then I have gone out with, um, him as well. We double-checked all the numbers and we're spot on for number one, so.
So, do you want a number of five hundred and seventy thousand?
No, I would just, um, award the RFP to him. So, is what I would do. And his.
Oh, we gotta put his dollar figure in there because if he does all this and goes over, I'll go do something not to exceed five hundred and seventy thousand.
Five hundred and seventy is what I would use for that. So, his, and his price per ton for binder, which we're not using this, we won't use this year because we're not grinding roads, was sixty-five dollars and fifty cents a ton. Price per ton machine top, which is what everything will be, is sixty-eight dollars, fifty cents a ton. Price per ton for handwork, which there's none of that, is a hundred and twenty dollars a ton. So, at that point. And the current New Hampshire DOT AC, which is the only part of it, is five hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. So, it was estimated at eight thousand, one hundred tons of asphalt.
So, explain to me what reclaimed and binder. This is six inch reclaimed and binder. I mean, I know.
So, that's for the, uh, next year there?
Right, I see that's.
That is when they go in, they would, uh, they reclaim the road, grind it up, and then afterwards add six inches of reclaimed, just like what's up behind the fire station here on it. And then, then they would pave it with what is called binder pavement there. Um, and that's like the base pavement, and then the top pavement is the actual the wear and course.
But in twenty twenty-two, you're doing Providence, Bosco Bell.
So.
That's not, doesn't have to be paved.
It was questionable, so it's just kind of, it's a, it's on there as a possibility, it doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
Oh, all right.
We know what happens, you know, when time goes on, road, shape, roads changes, so, um, but Providence is probably gonna take up the whole budget when they go to grind it.
Do the one oh seven to Ed's house?
Yeah. So, I know Ed won't be in favor of that.
Well, what kind of grinding is Ed doing on that?
Um, one of those, if you, if you don't grind it, just to make sure that there's no big rocks in there, because that's what's gonna frosty on.
Why do you do rocks?
So, if you don't get those out, then the only other option is to put twelve inches of base material down and then bake over at that point. If you do that, twelve inches, then you, by the time you get done paving, you've gone up sixteen inches, a foot and a half there. So, now you've already created a ditch to it, and now you've got all these other driveways you've gotta taper off still at that point. So, you try to take both, test the both worlds and not going up so high and trying to taper off these people's driveways on them and go too high with the road, so.
Is that the reclaimed stuff that Dad was having the issue with?
Yeah, so, so, on a, probably for, still work, we can get your D O T on that and, um, D is on the two, so.
I'm gonna give an answer.
For next week, so.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the road agent to spend up to five hundred and seventy thousand dollars on the twenty twenty paving proposal. Peachum Road, Holmes Road, Shackleton Corner Road, and White Oak Road.
Okay.
Motion been made to second it to authorize the road agent to spend up to five hundred and seventy thousand?
Correct.
For paving of, I can't remember, Shackleton, Holmes, Peachum.
Peachum and.
White Oak.
The ground of section.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay.
Um, next month there, the, towards the end of the month, the parade fire station's gonna have a gravel road maintenance class put on by UNH T two program there. Um, I signed, signed the town up to host that class. From hosting it, the town gets four free seats to it. Um, the three crew members up there all signed up for it.
When is that again? What did you say?
I think it's April, I didn't actually say a date, but I think it's like April twenty, eighth of December on that. I can't get exactly off off my head.
What's name of the class?
Uh, gravel road maintenance. Um, I also have, Jason is signed up for his culvert, maintainer certification.
Jason?
Thorn, Thorn, yep. And then he is also signed up for road maintenance one oh one. And he's signed up for the chainsaw class two as well.
Karen, why don't I think of it?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, High Road to Travel.
Yep.
There's a class in Concord on the seventeenth, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
No, yes, the seventeenth, and it is, uh, instruction on selectmen. So, you're going to take over class six roads?
Yep.
Would you sign me up for that, please?
I will. I'm going, I've signed myself up, so if you wanna go travel together, we can do that. All right. If it's still open, the class fills up very fast, so I'll try to sign you right up. If not, you can certainly take my seat.
No, 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 that's okay.
I, I am still keeping my eyes out for, I don't think it'll happen, but for Jason to go to the grader class there. Cool. Um, that was one thing that he said that he wouldn't mind learning how to do. He's, he's looking for longevity anyways here. So, he learns real quick on things, so I think that'd be, that would be good for him, um, especially to have somebody as a backup.
I, I hope you, I hope you all picked up on the fact that although George is the supernumeral uno grader operator, uh, he can't be doing that every single day. And it is foolhardy to think that we could get through forever with one grader operator. It needs to be at least two, and, and people should be cross-trained.
Agreed.
So, um, so just so you're aware of that there. And the last thing is, uh, Patty has given her, her notice. Her last day will be March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
I was waiting for that to come.
Yep, so, um, she has taken a full-time position that was offered to her.
Have the other.
Oh, I guess not, yes, but. The other one?
Application?
Uh, oh, Karen has that, so.
So, she took a new full, full-time job?
She did, yes, so. She said her, her last day will be March twenty-sixth there. So.
When you're ready.
So, there is, Karen does have a application if you want to talk about it later on.
Do that, please, okay.
The non-public, if you want to, you don't have to. So, just in case, so. Other than that?
Oh, just that, um, I may have emailed the board, uh, just for clarification. Uh, Andy also provided mechanical services for us other over and above his road agent position. So, I asked him if he was interested in continuing that. Um, it wasn't mentioned when you, we said we hired him part-time. So, if, if you wanna ask him questions about it, or make a motion to keep him on that capacity, or just how, whatever you wanna do, we should just have it in the minutes.
Yeah.
What was the rate in you when you were chatting to that? I know at one time you had three different rates when you were part-time.
Well.
Tell me what Dave.
Well, part-time.
No, back, back when you were with Dave.
Contracted for, like that, because that's what we, because we did, we did it as a subcontractor to fix everything.
Yeah, but you, you worked part-time for us?
Yep.
You fixed the trucks, and then you did use your own truck to plow?
And I plowed for you.
It was like three different rates you had at one time?
With, with Dave, yeah. So, um, the contractor rate, um, I just kept the rate at thirty bucks an hour. It's like I said, I don't need to get rich off of it, so, at that point, just kinda, it's enough to just cover me and my insurance there, just enough, so. But everything else I do, so. But I know, uh, I know George has already said that he'd be calling me anyways because he.
He's not a mechanic, no?
Correct, so, he's not at that point, so, um, and even some of the stuff that I do up there, the guys are just, they don't know how I do it, just, but.
Oh, Mike, Mike Dean's also gonna be available?
I hope so. I haven't talked to him at that one. I don't know the relationship that Jordan might have, so, I can always be for myself.
All right.
Do you want a motion? What is this Parade Hill Road?
Yeah, we, we took that out after, um, after we measured them there, so that's not gonna happen this year.
So, it shouldn't be on what was signed?
That, correct, I'll, you crossed that out.
Is there another road that should be added? White Oak, I thought?
Isn't White Oak on that one?
No.
That's White Oak, we gotta add to that. That's just a price sheet there, so.
I understand, but if we're signing something, it should be accurate. Does that all the roads Peachum, Shackleton, Holmes, and White Oak?
Correct, yes.
Do you want to take this, Laurie, and add that section of twenty twenty into that? Just make a pocket staple right to it, initial it. This is the roads and how many feet, and what he's gonna do to each one and the cost is.
And put George's name too, just the road agent.
I, I, I just haven't seen it, so.
Oh, you haven't seen it?
The name, the name you can put as George, app, phone number will be the same.
Just stuff should be accurate. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve Andy continuing to provide mechanical services, um, for, for town road crew vehicles. At a rate of thirty dollars, no?
Is your second?
Second.
Motion been made to second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Need some more signatures on that?
No, I think it's fine. Um, I just, Andy, do you, actually, we do. I need to break down Ian on that. Do you need to take that back? You want me to send it back to Walcott for you?
Make it send it back sometime.
You, you will?
Make it send it back.
All right, I'll go take a copy of it.
Copy it.
Okay.
So, he'll, he'll, he'll drop down and pick it up.
Okay.
All right, so Andy, when will your last day be officially?
My, the phone will be handed in to Karen Friday afternoon, so, when I'm done, at that point.
The thirteenth.
You know, you're still really there until town meeting ends.
Wait for one of, extend that maybe a day, twenty-four hours.
I was gonna say the thirteenth. Friday the thirteenth.
When's it make, Monday?
Monday?
Because after you.
That would be best.
Yep.
Because I figured after Friday, I was gonna grab the time, grab some hand event, I think it would be easier if you had that, so I was, so George didn't have to worry about it Monday one.
I'll just make the copy and send you the, you want the original, like, back to you?
Okay, that's all I had.
Anybody else have any questions of Andy?
No.
If you don't know where the roads are.
I'm learning.
I, I don't, it's not that I'm familiar with roads, I have certain names of roads, I probably didn't know that.
Ken.
Ken, the last time he, it was gonna be, it was supposed to be another two more months. Uh, that he was gonna be out, and that was two weeks ago, when he went to the coffee store, so. So.
No. This. When George left us, he went back to, tried to. Why you look back at your own day?
He did, he did open it. Jim Cluck, thirty-two hundred.
Yeah, right.
Over there.
He wasn't there.
Correct.
Sorry, he wasn't probably truthful.
Correct, over there, at that point, so. Um, then. They won't have anybody after Thursday from us, so. He.
May I go back?
Could, very possible. He has said it this morning, up to me, that he still hasn't given his rest to the nation, so.
Well, you would get him.
No, you wouldn't, so.
No, that's.
No, we don't. But. So. But. If that, if that happened, I'd already voiced to Karen the possibilities of things to do, so. It's like, it's not gonna still function at that point, so. Um. If you wanna talk about that, we can talk about that in a non-public, or Karen, just, just to let you know at that point, so.
Yeah, we could see what happens, yes.
But, just to see what happens, if it happens even, so, we're just, Karen knows, so.
Yep.
Unfortunately, it's a fear that, uh, all my guys have up there, so. And all, all of them wanted to leave, so I committed to stay and see how it is, work things out, like.
Yeah.
At that point, so. But, so, they are gonna stay there, we're gonna see how it is, let's watch, so. But.
Okay. Want you to get on?
Andy, thank you.
Thank you, Andy, good luck.
Alright, sign payroll manifest. Uh. Like a motion to approve. The loan application for the police cruiser. Karen, would you explain to us what you came up with?
Oh, just, um, for anyone that doesn't know, I think I emailed everyone, but Profile Bank got back to me the very next day. Um, their interest rate was only three point four percent. So, um, I do have a question for you, because the chief and I talked about it. So, a four-year would be seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars a month, a three-year would be nine hundred and fifty-four. And the chief and I talked, I know the motion said four years. Um, he. And I feel we should do it in a three-year, because.
Less interest.
Absolutely, you know, not a huge one, but it's less interest and it's a three-year, so it would be just if the board approves that.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
So, I'll make a motion, we approve the three-year lease from Profile Bank, and what's, what was the interest rate?
It's three point four percent.
And this is just to be clear, that at the end of this three-year lease, we buy that vehicle for a dollar, correct?
You don't even have to have it for a dollar in this, that would've been the municipal leasing company that has that in their contract. This is just a, a loan, you own it at the end of three years, there's no one dollar, you just pay exactly what the loan wants to be.
I see.
So this really isn't a lease, this is just a straight loan?
It's sort of a loan, right, right.
Was that a motion?
Yeah.
Is your second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a loan application to Profile Bank for three point four percent. For three years to purchase a new police cruiser. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed?
Do we need to do a motion, how do you sign it, or is that kinda?
Does it need a signature?
Yes, it does need, it requires one signature.
So I'll make a motion that we allow the chair and pastor to sign the loan application.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Do we know yet what it's gonna cost us to outfit said vehicle with all the bells and whistles?
Just the same price as he quoted, the twenty-eight thousand. Uh, well, no, it's fourteen thousand, because it's only one vehicle.
No, no, fourteen.
The twenty-eight was two vehicles, so fourteen thousand.
Which, which he claims he's going, whatever vehicle we do get rid of. We'll strip that.
Will offset.
Or you can use. If, if we choose to get rid of a vehicle.
Right, because Ed, last, if you read the minutes, last week, the last thing that Ed said was for the chief not to sell anything until the new vehicle is here.
Yeah.
But it was in the minutes.
Alright, that's fine.
Okay, how, when that piece of paper comes around, it should be in one of the files there.
Long term, right?
And Mary Jane actually is out in Pat's office, so. I mean, I could. Yeah.
Karen, do you want this now?
Sure, 'cause I'll send it over first thing in the morning.
Okay.
With the minutes, and that's all they need to.
Alright, everybody see the veterans credit? Application, elderly exemption.
Yeah.
Karen, I have a question for you, somebody asked me this weekend, and I thought about it so hard, I couldn't tell them. Um, husband and wife, both over sixty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
One is a mil, is a veteran.
Mm-hmm.
So he applied for a veterans credit.
Okay, yeah.
Can they also apply for a elderly exemption?
Of course they can, two se, two totally separate, on the elderly, they just have to meet the financial requirements.
So it's the financial requirement?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, forgot that completely.
Yeah.
You have that in writing or on paper anywhere?
Do.
Can I have a copy, sure.
Can I get a copy in there too?
Sure. Just. The applications are all front, so do you want it by, you don't wanna take it with you tonight, both of you?
If, yeah, if you have, if you can do it that fast.
It's all in one, the veterans and the elderly, and I believe it's all ready.
Is elderly also for disability as well?
Well, um.
Do you have a disability credit?
Is a disability, it's called, um, it, it's not a credit, so what happens with a disability is, uh, you have to meet certain requirements, but, um. What happens is, you can not pay your taxes, but it's a lien against you at the registry.
Oh, so they don't get a credit?
So you have to be very careful, right, there's no credit, and so then when you pass away, or if you, um, should come into money, you can pay it off, but if you pass away, then whoever else is on that deed has to pay that, the town back that money.
Ah.
So, with interest, so.
And the elderly is when you're sixty-seven?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, yeah.
Yep. So. But yes, they can absolutely get home.
It's, it's the. It's a word, not the money, the, uh. Value of their property.
Right, the difference between the two, right, so the veterans credit, you get actual money off your tax bill, five hundred dollars a year. Um, the elderly exemption reduces, depending on your age, reduces like thirty thousand off your property value, and then your taxes are based on that lower value, so. And I think, and we, we reached out to other towns to see if we're comparable, and so we're very comparable in what we allow. Their residents, if they only have one residence, you can, um, the, the residence in two acres of the property is not even considered in any of the value. That's, that's totally exempt, and then they have to supply, um, you know, their bank accounts and stuff, um, to see, what, yeah, yeah. And then it goes up, I think sixty-five, if you're sixty-five to seventy, it's thirty thousand off, and then it goes up thirty-five, maybe forty thousand for the next category, and fifty for the last, off, off the value of the property, for your tax bill.
Good information, people's questions.
I think, actually, Margaret is going to, um, have the table at town meeting, and that's one of the things that she wanted to hand out, was information about abatements to elderly.
Yeah. Yeah, I really am happy about that.
I, I, I was interested, and I saw the application for the elderly exemption. I know these people. And they are not, they're citizens. They don't vote, they don't go to town meeting, they stay very low on the radar. And they're way older than seventy. So somehow, somebody put a bug in their ear, and they finally, after all these years, have applied for the elderly exemption. It's like, mother, god.
Good, good, make sure that they know they have until, I think it's April one, or whatever, they have to get that back in if they want it to be, um, on this year's.
Yeah. Okay. See the leave request, who was that from?
I was gonna, I was gonna put it in, I haven't put it in yet, it's just I have, um, physical therapy on Friday, so it would just be. Well, here's my sick time to go.
Okay.
But. Friday the thirteenth. You sure, am I sure I wanna go to physical therapy on Friday?
Alright.
You might, you might get more hurt. I hope it's nothing serious.
I hear, yeah, that it can't get any worse, so, you know, hey.
So that takes care of all our action items. On the informational items, did you read the report from DOT on the Crooked Run Bridge?
Yeah, it looks like we're in good shape for that.
Huh?
It looks like what we're doing is acceptable, that's what the report said.
Well, we're not doing anything.
Well, the s.
The point is that.
Do we have signs up or something?
The bridge has been red-listed, but there's nothing so wrong with it that we have to fix it immediately. Uh, there's no restrictions on it, there's no posting requirements for weight limits. Uh, if you looked at the picture. Uh. I, I'm just amazed, but as I've known for years and years and years, you will never, ever not have a bridge that's red-listed. It's DOT's way of. Having something for a bunch of people to do, to go out and look at culverts. Just amazed, anyway.
It said we were good, we didn't have to do anything, that's all I cared about.
Well, no, but it's a red-listed bridge.
Yeah, but.
And they're always gonna hold that over your head.
But don't they make, don't they like take those bridges and put them on a schedule when they're gonna fix them? Because isn't the town and the state required to fix them, together?
The red-listed bridge means that the town is liable.
Right.
But there's no schedule of when it has to be fixed.
Oh.
It's just a, I gotcha, and you can't get away. That's why we.
So do we have to schedule to have it fixed?
Well, well, we're gonna have to at some point, but that's why we put so damn much money in that.
That can go on the list. The bridge is not, the bridge, right. We can have that. Like when we're doing the Han and Natta? Yes, we can put Crooked Run on there as a poten, future project. Okay, so when we're done, are we done with it, we're not done with it?
No.
No.
So when Han and Natta is done, then we could put Crooked Run in there?
Well, either that or you wait till your money gets back up to a point where you can afford to have the thing done.
Future project.
Because it's not as simple as, as digging out the old culvert and putting in a new one. They will require an engineering study, and they'll have to check the stream flow, and they have to make sure there's no endangered species in the road.
No, I know this, I've seen him, I've seen him, but, but they will give us some money towards it, correct?
But Lori, no, most of the bridges in town are all the town's responsibility, all the state does is come out, it's supposed to go biannually, to inspect them. Then they send us a list, and they'll say this bridge may be whatever category, and it will tell you what needs to be done. Only the bridges that we've gone through state, state aid to replace, which will be Han and Natta, Welch Road Bridge, and is in Province Ro, uh.
Crisp, Bosco Bell Bridge.
Bosco Bell Bridge. Were all state projects, the state pays eighty percent of that project, now the state will manage that bridge. So, all the rest of them are up, totally up to the town to fix with your money.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and there's quite a few bridges, so.
So we should nearly stop thinking about it.
So that's why we continuously put money in, in our bridge, um, yeah. But Crooked Run is the only one on the red list so far.
So that one we're doing. About the Han and Natta, right?
Yeah, Han and Natta is part of the state project, it's been in the works for several years.
Feels like a long.
Yes, yeah, and the problem with, um, Han and Natta right now is, we have three abutters that, um, the state, in order to fix the road and the bridge, um. Coming to the bridge and leaving the bridge, they have to have easements from these people. Um, one person absolutely, right from the beginning, gave us an easement, um, the other person we're still working with, um, who's finally gonna sign the easement, and the third person, I still can't get a hold of. I've called him a couple times, driven by, I, I don't know, but the project really needs to move forward now, they're getting into, you know, it's almost kinda late in the season, they have to go out to bid, construction and everything, so their, uh, engineers are getting a little worried.
What happens if you don't?
It would just push the project back like an awful year.
And do eminent domain or whatever?
No, that would be, that would take way too long, it'd be way too costly, 'cause you'd have to have courts.
So they don't have like, uh, what happens if an abut doesn't get back to you in, within a reasonable amount of time?
Right, you just try to negotiate with them, um, we've never had one of the abutters we've been working with, but at least, you know, at least they're now going to settle with us. And even the fees that we pay them for their easements, if it's permanent easements, um, the state does reimburse us, uh, part of that money, so.
So what's our next stop with these other people that haven't signed, I mean, can, can some of the selectmen just go down and knock on the door and say, hey?
Yep, absolutely, I've gone by on weekends to try to catch them home, I thought perhaps they, if they were both in the service or something, maybe they had gone, I, like I said, I've spoken with them once, they've asked me to. They were concerned about the trees that were gonna be taken and what was gonna be replaced, so I reached out to the engineers, the engineers answered and said, okay, we, they reduced the easement, the length of the easement, so they wouldn't take as many trees. That was the last I've heard from them, so I've sent them a new, a new letter, just a sign, they have to come in, I'd notarize it, um, I just haven't heard, so like I said, I've driven by.
Karen.
It's Southerton, Matthew Southerton and Crystal Hole, H O L L, not people that I'm, I'm really familiar with, but.
They live in the house, right there?
So, um, you know, I, I don't know what else to do, but, um, yeah, certainly, I mean, if somebody, a selectman wants to stop by.
I mean, I don't have a problem stopping by if you want me to, that's right around the corner from my house.
Yeah. Yeah.
What's the name again?
Just drive by, Matthew Southerton, and.
If everybody's okay with that.
I mean, plus they should be able to work out a deal with whoever the state hires for contractor to put in, you know, bushes and vegetation or something like that.
Yeah, they have it all listed out.
You, you didn't, you didn't read the exchange between Peter and Kevin Reel? And the le, the letter they sent back to us, and all of the things that they noted that they wanted in their easement. Uh. Had, I don't know, that was last spring, last summer, I don't.
And Christine Hall, did you say?
Uh, no, it's Crystal Hole, H O L L.
Kevin wasn't happy with the fact that they were gonna plant certain deciduous shrubs, because the beaver were gonna come along and eat them. So instead, why not plant something that the beaver don't like as much, like conifers?
So, that's where we are with that.
And there's also something deer, deer repellent bushes too, isn't it?
They wouldn't eat it.
Oh, like Karen knew. They're deer repellent.
Anyway. You've all seen the report, yes?
Yes.
Uh, is anybody coming in for the pocket heads, Karen?
It was just Andy.
Alright. Since there is no public, or public input. I'm just gonna say, Andy, would you say that public input was open at six twenty-five and closed at six twenty-six? No one was in attendance, however.
If you open it up for public announcements, I do have something from Margaret that I told her I would read, where she.
Okay, well, well, don't close it quite yet, Andy. You're on. You're on, Karen.
So, Margaret just wanted to mention that Saturday at town meeting, they're gonna have a table to disseminate information about seniors. It will be before town meeting starts and then a little bit after town meeting ends. And it will be a table as soon as you walk in the door. They're gonna talk about meals on wheels, service linked resources, medical forms that are in the town report for people to put on the refrigerator, whatever. Abatements, and how to sign up to get a copy of the basider. Can I send that all to you, Andrew, or?
How to get a copy of the basider?
Yeah, she said that some of the seniors in town, where there's no more sun cooked sun, some are not there.
Yeah, I just saw that.
Yeah, they're trying to-
Not yet.
Yeah, I heard that, that they're looking for people to do all kinds of different things, columnists, editors, yada, yada, yada. Someone who was sentenced me and I said, "I'm not adding anything to my plate." No, thank you.
And while we're on the subject of town meeting, we have two things that need to be accomplished. One is asking for a moment of silence for Gordon and Cindy. Anybody object if I do that?
Well, didn't we do something for Gordon, for Gordon last year at town meeting?
He spoke. He wasn't dead last year.
He was, he spoke, wasn't he?
No.
What'd you speak about him then? Cause you spoke.
But when did he die, does anybody know?
It may have been that there was-
He resigned, didn't he?
No, not by then.
No, he wasn't dead, cause he didn't die until June. No, it takes that matter.
No, yeah, he died much earlier and they had the memorial party in June.
Yeah.
I think he died in January. Died before town meeting, it was twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I do remember, that somebody else died too.
Paul Lindrich.
Paul Lindrich.
I spoke about Paul Lindrich and Ed spoke about Gordon.
So then do you wanna do it for Cindy?
Just for Cindy then?
Just for Cindy?
Yeah, we kinda read.
Okay.
Now, did she have also over thirty years, or how many years did she have?
Yes, because we presented her, if we look at last year's town report, that's the pictures of Rick and Bill Gardner presenting how the-
So, you know, if I, if you have the picture on, which you did, because you emailed it to me, you should be able to put the picture right in there.
Thirty-one years.
So thirty-one years, okay. So we can put thirty-one years.
Okay, yeah, and I, yeah.
And then you can drop the picture right in there.
Right into it?
Yeah, so that'll just go right in.
So the question remains, do you want me to do it, or would one of you like to do it?
Go up.
Ask for a moment of silence for Cindy. Okay, I don't mind. The second thing is that we are also recognizing Chris Hipkis, and by the way, I instructed him that he will be at town meeting.
Did he say he would?
Yes.
Okay, then what happened to his clock?
Right here.
Oh, thank goodness.
Why don't you do the same thing then? Do it for first two.
I'm not asking for a moment of silence for it.
No, no, no.
No, I mean, you know, do the clock.
Yes.
I can throw in a slide that, you know, so we'll pick, we need a picture of him. Oh, he's there, I'll get a picture of him today.
That's right. Yeah, we might want an earlier picture. I didn't, I don't mean, I, poof, sorry.
It's too bad, and one of the things that's not mentioned on this plaque is that he was a scout leader for Ever and a Day.
Everybody said that, but, yeah.
This is municipal.
Right, I was trying to keep it municipal, right, but absolutely mention that, please, yeah.
Okay. Karen, you have anything else for us under public announcements?
Yeah.
Does anybody else here have anything to offer under public announcements? Okay, now I'm gonna close public input at six twenty-nine. Okay. I know one thing we have to do. We need to go through the town report and decide who will speak to which warrant articles.
All right, I, I think I circled all mine last week.
Yeah, I jotted them down.
Wonderful, honey, very happy for you.
Good, great.
I thought you would be.
Now tell the rest of us what it is you wanna do.
I gave it to Karen, didn't I?
Yes, you did. So you have three, if I'm correct.
I should have five.
Oh dear God, I only have three. How you doing? All right, so.
What do you have?
Have it in my book.
Yep. And all parks and rec.
Or did you give us a piece of paper?
I gave you these.
I can't remember what I did. Oh, 'cause you know what, you gave us a piece of paper, because it had the extra piece.
Right, we said, I said I can do no and none, we'll just cross it out.
I made it again and I'll tell you which ones.
What, you lost it?
Well, probably not, but I know which ones they were, it was all the parks and rec ones.
We wanna start right with number, number four, on page eight?
Six.
Or if you're not using your book.
Yes, let's start at number four.
Number seven.
Who wants to do that one?
I'll take the first, I'll take the four, five, and six.
Well, Lori's doing six.
I'm doing all the parks and rec ones.
Was that park rec? Sorry, Lori.
It's okay.
I just figured I'd do, do them in a group.
I know, I thought we were gonna do that too, but then when we talked last week, they just said-
All right, so you wanna do four and five?
I'll do, I'll do four and five, yep.
I can do six and seven.
Do number eight.
Do you wanna do nine too?
Yeah, I'll always sign Paula up for ten, eleven, and twelve.
I hate, I hate signing her up, not having her not here.
Can you let her go?
All you're doing is making a motion.
Can you let her know, Karen, when she comes back?
Not even that, I mean, it's explaining the, the article.
No, not, anybody can explain it.
Well, that's right, that's the idea of who will, who will explain it.
No, I don't, I don't, I never, I don't think we've ever done it that way yet, we're just, this is just a person who's gonna make the motion to accept it.
Rick, one time I sat up on that stage and I moved to accept every article as it came along, because I was the first one to speak and the first one to be recognized. And then there came a time when other people on the board couldn't even get the right words out of their mouth. So, it's not about making the motion to accept, it's about explaining the article to the public. Now, if you don't like that, I don't believe that that's the way it should be, fine, let's do something different.
Well, that would be different, because we've never done it that way.
You've never done it that way.
Well, in four, four, five years, I've never done it that way.
Well, we could look at the slideshow to, because that's gonna have some of the information down there, which might help.
Well, if that's the case, if you're gonna talk about it, we'll go back and see what four and five are. Not even look at them.
But you didn't read them.
I didn't read them, I just gonna make a motion.
The fire pump release and the-
I'm not talking about five, no freaking way.
Uh-oh, okay.
Lori can talk.
Now you're reading, oh my God.
Well, if that's how he wants to do it, I'm not gonna try to explain five.
So-
I will, I'll do five, how's that?
Oh, God. Pretty much tried to put on the slide, like Fox had any questions that they're gonna ask as far as the DES ordered the repairs.
Right.
All right, so that's how it is. Okay, so Rick is four, Ed is five, Lori's six and seven.
Yep, Ed is eight and nine.
Ed is eight and nine.
See, Paula will do ten, eleven, and twelve.
All right, that's where you want it.
And since we'll fill in the information that she's gonna talk about, our- Diane, you're not gonna be here.
Rick will do number thirteen.
That's right, you're not gonna be here.
So I just wanna make sure we can get the swap stuffs on, I mean, I'm gonna do fourteen and fifteen.
You wanna do thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen?
No, thirteen is Rick's private.
Rick, all right, Rick.
Oh, it can happen.
I'll do fourteen and fifteen.
I'll take that, and put those in tomorrow, I'll let you, and then if we can get any information on Karen.
I'll do sixteen.
Who's doing thirteen, Ann?
Rick.
Rick.
I'm doing fourteen and fifteen.
Yep.
Rick, if you can give the highlights, we can drop it right into the slide too.
The highlights though?
The thirteen for the three hundred year celebration. Kinda like a parade, or I'm not sure what, Lance.
I don't know, everybody's gonna have such, twenty, twenty-seven.
You know, you realize that some of us won't even be here then.
I listened to my dad say that last night, "Oh, I'll be here at the end of my week," and I'm like. So Lori, are you doing parks and rec?
I'm doing fourteen and fifteen.
Facility? Yeah, okay.
Rick, you said you'd do sixteen?
Correct.
No, we don't.
Now, I have a question, because I guess I just didn't think about it, but on number twenty-six.
Why are you jumping ahead?
Sorry. It's, it's really not about doing it, I wanted to ask a question about that.
Let's take them in order here, just so we don't get confused.
All right. Who's doing seventeen?
Are you doing any?
I'll do seventeen, that's an easy one. Only a buck.
And so-
You see, this next one, eighteen, Diane, you should be doing.
Diane isn't gonna be here.
Eighteen, municipal computer. Well, I technically, I will be doing it, because I'll make sure that the slide has all the information that anyone would ask.
So you wanna give that to Paula?
He may not know that you're not gonna be here because you emailed it.
Yeah, not wanting to be here.
Where are you going? You have no authority to not be at town meeting as a selectman.
Okay, so, all right, we'll fill that out so that all the questions will, like, be answered, on what future needs and whatnot.
Paula, eighteen and nineteen? Do we wanna do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Or just give her eighteen? This is too milfoil, does anyone wanna speak about milfoil?
The first milfoil is taking in the grant funds, that's gonna go into the general fund, so that's the grant, the aquatic plant, the program.
If Ed Nester is here, he'll probably speak to it anyway.
So have Ed Nester do it?
No, he-
Well, you have to move it, someone moves in second.
I'll move it.
Okay, so Ed will do those, do you want, do you want, do you want Paula to do eighteen? Give her another one?
Yes, she can do eighteen, I'll do nineteen.
And twenty? They're both milfoil, and you'll ask Ed Nester to talk about it.
All right. Twenty-one, assist turn, twenty-one and twenty-two assist turns.
Yeah, this, so this one is the donation that, so this is, this is to accept, kind of officially accept the donation, right, to go into the fund.
Exactly, yeah.
Karen, I have a question on number twenty-one.
Yep.
I think I understand it, but said funds to come from unassigned fund balance and is a donation from a resident for this purpose.
Right.
The donation was thirty-four thousand?
No, the donation was eight hundred dollars.
Current balance is thirty-four.
Ah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a current fund balance is thirty-four, but the actual warrant article reads the amount of eight hundred.
Right.
Do you want me to do that one? Twenty-one?
If you want.
I don't care, I'll do twenty-one. You want me to do twenty-two too?
I just want a-
All right, I'll do twenty-one and twenty-two. That gives me six.
Let's give Paula twenty-three.
All right.
I'll do twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, because the slide stops it, because they're on the money articles, I was like, what's thirty-four?
Rick, can you do twenty-five? Sure.
Twenty-six, what's your question?
Oh, so because they now have a building on that property, does it get assessed differently, and will the property taxes increase?
Yes, so they, they had, have they put a bigger place on there, an actual office?
Office trailer.
They have an office trailer.
Because they did send us a thing and say that's, that's what they were looking to do. So, yeah, the assessor goes down, he reassesses it, it, it will have to be after, you know, after the law.
No, I know, I just wanted to know if they'll pay more in property taxes.
They will, yes, they will.
Thank you.
I'll do twenty-six.
And-
I think Ed should do twenty-seven, you could explain that, Ed.
Well, no, it was submitted by, does anybody want grapes? I brought a whole bunch of grapes, if anybody would like some grapes.
I missed here.
Poor Paula, she's gonna be starving.
Yeah, I brought her a tub tonight.
Good girl.
I needed myself.
You don't offer to other people, what?
Oh, it's too far to pass it down.
I think that's fine with everything in front of me.
Lori.
And look at that tree.
I wanna do fifteen.
God, we go backwards.
Why do you wanna do fifteen?
As a historical society guy.
Oh, all right, so I guess I'm not doing fifteen.
Twenty-seven, something that you might not know, is that whatever, or however, a petition warrant article is worded, cannot be amended, okay? So if the voters say, "This doesn't make any sense," say, "Sorry, it's a petition warrant article, you have to move it." If you don't like it the way it's written, vote no, but there is no authority to amend it, and the selectman can't do anything to make it better, okay?
Huh?
That's not my rules.
What are you saying to me? You want me to do twenty-seven?
If all, if all you wanna do is just make a motion to accept it, you're gonna have to be the one that tries to explain it.
I don't know what it's about.
I thought Ed was gonna do twenty-seven. Who, you?
No, I am not.
I thought the petitioners had to do it.
I did too.
Yeah.
I thought they made the motion from the-
The petitioners stand up and can move that it-
Yeah, because I don't think the board took any vote on it, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Who are the petitioners of this?
First one on the petition was Suzanne Allison.
Yes, I think they, the petitioners would do it, and they, they have to talk to the board, don't want to talk to them at all.
And the moderator has copies of all the petitions.
So is that it?
Twenty-eight.
So twenty-eight, the budget committee moves it, yeah, that's why I put budget committee budget for the fiscal year, so, because it's actually their budget, not my, right?
You know, I noticed something on the school warrant. Their, their article, last article, it says, the amount they wanna raise, but I know this is kinda a, it doesn't say the budget committee's amount, it just says to raise an appropriate X amount of money.
Right.
The second sentence says the school board, you know.
Is now, is that the, oh, I should look that up, right?
It just doesn't have the word, the budget committee's amount. I don't know that it makes a difference, it probably doesn't. I mean, I'm sure people can figure out, the school board wanted this, so that figure must be budget committee's they give up.
It's a good question, because sometimes, mm, I'd say-
Sometimes they put their own figure in.
Oh.
School board.
Well, if it doesn't-
It doesn't, yeah, but the-
Right. And you don't have to, if you match budget committees, you don't have to have anything about the school board.
Different, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so Article nine, yeah, because it is, if the school district will vote to raise an appropriate, and then they split out the-
But it doesn't say the budget committees.
Yeah, the budget committee always moves it, because it's their number.
Right.
I have no idea, that's a very good question.
I know just DRA said to, to what, just, yeah, say the budget committee's recommended amount.
Yeah, I wonder if it's different for towns like that, I don't know, that's a good question. But they always moved it, so. Now, what you probably didn't see is on the, because Karen has the original slideshow, slide, whatever, the colored one.
Yeah.
And I took, the tax impact is gonna be in red, there is one that's missing in there, because I forgot it, but you'll see on there how it's, it'll stand out in like red.
Oh, yeah.
So that it's, they can see exactly what the, now, if you want the estimated tax impact where it's spread out on the line underneath, I can put that in red too.
Do a good job.
Yeah, because you know how the school does, um, estimated tax, total tax impact?
Yeah.
Um, ours certainly is not gonna be all of those that you met up because they were in there through the last year.
Yeah, and that's why I put specifically estimated, because, and then, then that's what I wanted to do, because if you read down there, I put for the...
Where is that, Diane?
On every slide, it'll say estimated tax impact, and I put what you had, but then it put for property value at twenty thousand, I should probably underline current town valuation.
Oh, the current, yeah.
So that way it can change because it's gonna be based on what next year's is.
Right.
But so that's why they should know it's an estimated tax impact, and you know, the...
Yeah, for all. Get that back to you then.
Who's gonna do the updates?
I'll do the updates.
Oh, you will?
Yeah, because it's, I'll just...
Because you had some notes in there too.
Yes, I'm going to, um... I can go in and do the ones.
Absolutely. You'll, you have one of the master ones anyway, so, so you'll have the template.
Yep.
And who's gonna run that?
Well, that's what I was gonna bring up, that I don't know if you were going to be at the meeting to run the slideshow.
I have no idea.
I was gonna say, wait, does it go to the school?
Um, usually, Tim, the principal.
Really?
He'll sit in the audience, or, or he'll have it, like, the remote control right there, whatever. I've not, I've been, and then there's a question that we need to talk with Nancy, because the whole reason I put the, these slides
Mm-hmm.
is because Chris Hickus called it electioneering if we went, after they voted on the next slide, if we went to the next slide like that, he called it electioneering, so that's why we put title slides in it, so that way, while the warrant was being read, we would keep that title slide up, and then after the motion was made in second, and then you'd click and move on to that next slide where the warrant is still listed at the top of the slide, but then your highlights would absolutely stand out higher, you know, older than the other ones. This is hopefully it'll stop people, because, you know, when people ask questions, more people ask questions. That's why I figure if you try to answer it, so the information is there, because we, we found we just wait for people to come up to the microphone now rather than try and explain it, so, because if it's on the slide, we'll answer it.
Alright, we've decided who's gonna represent, or who's gonna present all the warrant articles.
Yep.
Any questions? Okay. I don't think we have any other business to come before us tonight.
I have one.
Okay.
Yep, just, um, okay, so, I'll try to be as brief as possible. So, I don't know, who was here with Lester Huckins? Lester Huckins, um, did a huge subdivision ages ago, and it's, he has lots on Gray Road and Province Road. So what happened in the subdivision was because it was X amount of lots that he created, the law and planning board required him to put in two cisterns, okay? So he put in a cistern on Province Road. After...
I remember, yeah.
Uh, getting him to...
And he had to give us money.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, he needs to put one on Gray Road, so all the properties say he can't sell any more lots unless he puts in that second cistern. So what's happened is, on Province Road, where the cistern is, there is a lot, um, that these people bought and they wanna build on. Now, the building inspector said, I can't issue any building permits because any other sale requires him to put in a second cistern. So the issue is...
And these people didn't know this before they bought the lot.
Right.
Just like the other person that we went through this with.
Right. So that's, and I explained to this person, if, if you can't build, and you, you could go back to Lester, because it's buyer beware, he should have disclosed all that to you, and he didn't. But the issue is, and I spoke with the fire chief, the lot that these people bought is the lot that has the cistern on it.
Oh, which was the same situation as the other guy that he put this on.
So the lot is on Province Road.
And that guy was mad.
It's got the cistern on that exact lot, so I called the fire chief and I said, you know, with, this is the situation, can we give him a, should we give him a building permit, and we really should, because it's not a sale of Lester's land, any of the other land on Gray Road, it's not, um, it's not even a sale on Gray Road.
What did the fire chief say?
He said, yes, we, we probably should, I mean, it has a land, it has a cistern on it, so...
So the cistern's on it?
The cistern is on that land, we have to use it.
And the property owner knows that it's on there?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought you said that the cistern needs to go on that land.
I have a question.
It's already existing.
The cistern's already there, oh.
Is there, is there on that lot for the cistern?
Yes, we did all that when he put it in, we, um, the fire chief, the board, everybody worked together, um, we have a deed. Whenever we put in the cistern, he has to sign the deed, it's recorded at the registry.
So then why, I guess I'm confused, why wouldn't we give him a building permit?
Well, only because all the, all the building lots say, so if the building inspector looks it up, or the assessor looks it up, it says, don't issue any building permits until Lester puts in that second cistern. And it's just on all the lots, but, um, it probably shouldn't be on that lot, the language, so we can remove it, but the building inspector just wants to make sure that the boards want, then want him to issue a building permit for these people.
But aren't you losing leverage against Lester in the future?
Well...
Well, that's why I'm a little confused, I, I...
You might be.
Not really, because he's, he, he, he can't sell any lots on Gray Road.
Or anymore, and, and the other thing is...
He can sell all he wants, he sold this one.
But Lester...
It's on the Province Road.
We didn't, but we had, we had, I'll say, a moratorium on the Province Road lots too, all the lots in that subdivision, we said no more building permits issued.
Alright, then if that's the case...
Now, he, he sold that to his nephew Lester, and his nephew wanted to build on it.
Right, so Lester didn't sell this lot to the new people. Um, the lot was under the name of Bebo.
Brendan Bebo.
Brendan Bebo. Um, and Brendan Bebo sold it last November to Mr. Frost. So it's not even a sale from Lester, which makes it even more kind of hunky. Um...
Oh my god, is there a requirement for this, for another cistern to be built in this area? What, what, what was the...
On the Gray Road.
On Gray Road?
Yep.
And this house that we're talking about is on Gray Road?
Nope, it's on Province.
But it has a cistern?
And it already has a cistern on it that was required.
So they've like met their requirements.
I technically, I see them.
I don't think they have, I disagree, because planning board said when they approved that subdivision, he needs two cisterns on the, on that subdivision, he's put one in, and he continues to sell the lots. And we put the moratorium on there to force him at some point to pony up the money to build the second cistern.
And he hasn't sold any more lots since he put the first one in.
But if we allow this, if we allow him, if we allow this building permit, then...
What's gonna stop the other ones at Gray Road?
What's gonna stop the, the future?
Well, any of the other ones that would be directly from Lester sold and on Gray Road.
So Lester sells them to his nephew, and his nephew turns around and sells them to somebody else.
But the planning board, if you read the cistern qualifications in the planning board, I believe it says somewhere that you have to be within a thousand feet. If you're within a thousand feet of a cistern, then you wouldn't have to, you know, then, you, you meet the requirement.
But isn't this all part of the subdivision, I guess?
Well, he was supposed to put Gray Road in first, a cistern, couldn't, couldn't because of it.
He was, and he didn't do either of them.
And he didn't do that, and then he did Province Road first, because he can't do Gray Road.
And then when he went to planning board, he went to planning board, um, because he said, rather than cisterns, I'll sprinkle all the houses. I have, I have notes, a whole pile of notes. And so the planning board said, okay, you can put in one cistern and then, you know, sprinkle the houses. So then later on, when he started selling lots, then he came back and said, um, I'd rather put in cisterns and sprinkle. And somehow through, through building inspection and planning, um, a couple of houses got COs before anybody even caught that he was supposed to be putting in cisterns. So I talked with Nancy on planning board to make sure this doesn't happen again, first of all, if, if there's a requirement. So now we put it right on the assessing card, so if anybody looks up the property record, they'll see right on there requires a cistern.
Well, I'm wondering if we should talk to the planning...
But you, you guys gave him a deadline, like, back in twenty eighteen, as to when he had to have both of them.
Yeah, we've been dealing with him, he's...
I know, but we keep, if we get, keep letting him get away with things, he's gonna continue to do this bad behavior that he's been doing for years, so I'm wondering if this should not be a conversation with the planning board.
It could, these people are coming in, they want to be on the agenda next week because she, Denise, whatever, whatever her name is, works for, um, is a real estate lawyer. So, um...
But shouldn't... Because the planning, does the planning board look and review all these, um, plans when people wanna build houses on these lots before they get built in permits and have to deal, do they ever deal with Lester?
No, they don't, because once they do their deal, once they make their, once they make their approval, it's off their plate, it's on the, it's on the building department.
And that just comes to us, huh?
No, not...
Why, why do we, because we, the, the planning board approves subdivisions.
Subdivision.
And the subdivisions require a cistern.
Some do. Anything over three lots.
Anything over three lots.
This was.
So then the fire chief gets involved, I mean, he submitted his plan, he said he, the cisterns are gonna be here, he submitted the plan, planning board, fire chief, all signed up on it, um, like I said, somehow, he has to actually, see, the language in the planning board, you have to actually sell the lot before you're required to put it in. So even though he had a twelve lot subdivision, until he sells them, because he could, if he didn't sell them, he could just put them all back, merge them and make one piece of land. So the language says, once you sell your third lot, you're required to put in a cistern. So the first two get sold, the people build houses, they get COs, it's their houses. And then the third one gets, goes to get sold, and that's when you have to say, oh no, you have to put in a cistern, right?
But, but what stops him from selling that third lot, because he doesn't have to go to the planning board of the town to sell the lot?
Right, he doesn't.
So he could sell it to the people and nobody would even know until that person goes to build a house, and then all of a sudden...
These are sample values for those of us who participated in such things. It's for you to drop down, number of votes.
And then the people that buy it get screwed.
Well, no, that's when they take Lester to court. I mean, they should come in here, they should look at the ass, the record, they, I mean, they should, the real estate person should know.
From the, in school.
I was gonna say, what title company?
Thank you.
Title company is supposed to do the research, so they look at the card, and the card says no building permitted and no cisterns.
Then by rights, wouldn't they, the real estate lawyers sue the title company?
Well, and that's what she said, she has different avenues she can pursue, but because this is the way it is.
She's looking to see if we would think, um...
You know, unfortunately, because it's in her front yard, and, and our ordinance says if it's a thousand feet away,
Right, and it's right on the lot they own.
You're almost gonna have to give it to them.
It's a sticky situation.
It is a sticky situation, now, I haven't called anybody to ask anything about it, because, you know, I think it's pretty clear the fire chief says he thinks we have to issue the permit.
How many more lots was Lester own, do we know?
Well, I can look back up, I wanna say like maybe five, I think there's five. And, and Lester, the only place to put it on Gray Road, I think if you remember,
Yes.
Um, he's got one little fifty foot right away between two lots on Gray Road that go into his big parcel land of ten, twelve acres. So we said to him, the only way you're gonna put in a cistern is to come in through your fifty foot right away and put it somewhere up there in your ten acre piece.
Yeah, but the fire department doesn't want it up there, because they gotta maintain the road going out.
Exactly. Exactly, yes, because then we have to have the...
Have to plow it and all that, yeah.
So that's probably why he's stalled and saying, oh, at some point they're gonna...
And you're not selling any other lots, yeah. I know, it's a mess. But I mean...
Right, this is fifty foot right away.
Bottom line, she can recoup from the title company, because that could have been, that obviously was...
Should have been disclosed, yeah. And see, she didn't buy it directly from Lester, but Lester sold it to his son-in-law, nephew?
Nephew.
Boy, sneaky.
Oh.
Well, his nephew's owned it for a while.
Oh.
Yeah, it's not like they just turn it off.
Yeah, I never know.
He couldn't know, honestly, because he's...
The more and more I learn.
You got another whole year to learn there, Lori.
I know, I know, yeah.
Alright, it's almost seven o'clock, I have a motion. Is that good? Never mind.
You want a motion to adjourn recess?
No, no, because there's only two of us here.